Our tech people, are we good to go? Are we all good to go? Excellent. Okay. So, Mr. Plattenberg, we would like to turn the microphone over to you to present to us the Region 3 Community Engagement Meetings update.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGough. What I'd like to do, Dr. Garza and members of the school board, is really today's work session topics is to go through the community engagement meetings that we had, the four community engagement meetings that we had that were held at Hayfield, Twain, Sandburg, and Whitman Middle School. These community engagement meetings were really to take a look at the entire Region 3. What we were doing is, we were very fortunate as a school system, school division, to receive a grant for Fort Belvoir to provide another elementary school. In addition to that, at Woodlawn Elementary, we had built capacity as part of the renovation that Mr. Sneed was overseeing, to go ahead and accommodate those seats when we were, prior to receiving the grant. When we received that grant, and therefore are able to go ahead and provide accommodation for students that will be served on the Fort Belvoir reservation, we're very fortunate in that regard. So, what that did was that opened up additional capacity, and we had a number of individual projects that were going through renovation in the region, approximately almost seven, actually. And so, the culmination of all of these things going on, and also some of the feedback that the elected officials had heard from some of their constituents, we felt it appropriate to go out and check the pulse of the community, to go ahead and see whether or not we were moving in, in fact, the right direction. And we were to go out and talk about really four basic things, and we really broke them down into three categories. The first one was to discuss the CIP guiding principles. As you may recall, there was guiding principles that had been provided by FPAC quite some time ago, and there were also some generic frameworks, discussion topics, that facility staff had been using. So, what we did was, we kind of consolidated, quasi-consolidated, the two of those, to go ahead and go out with the public and have a discussion about those principles. In addition, we talked to the community about any program offerings, instructional program offerings, that were being provided not only in Region 3, but throughout the county as well. And then, the last thing that we spoke of were the strengths and challenges of the proposed solutions for Region 3 in terms of the capacity issues. Now, the format of the meeting was really to basically do a basic introduction, and then really kind of lay out the agenda, and then to let the elected officials, Mr. Dan Stork and Ms. Tammy D'Arinacovacs, go ahead and greet the community members who came out for the evening, and really talk about what it was we were going to be looking at as well. Of the four meetings that were held, we had approximately 370 people who attended, and the two solutions, what we talked about for capacity, were to either build the new school at Pinewood Lakes, or to provide a renovation to the Virginia Hills Center of an existing facility. So, as I said, we began talking about the guiding principles, and some of the overarching themes that we found out and feedback that we received. Now, keep in mind, out of the number of people that I said attended these meetings, and when we're talking about 370 individuals, and you divide that over approximately four meetings, even though some were more attended than others, and the last one, I think, was the highest attended, when you look at those, the feedback that we received, it was generally, there wasn't a lot of inertia, a lot of energy and emotion talking about the guiding principles, but we did get folks saying that some of the principles were in conflict, and they needed to be prioritized. They said neighborhood schools are the key, and we do need to eliminate attendance islands. And as you, as you may recall, our school board policy, in fact, does speak to that in terms of boundary adjustments. And some of the feedback we received was that we needed to be more specific. But again, the feedback was not a large sampling, and the same thing with getting into the programs, because the overarching themes in the programs in Region 3 and through the county, folks generally who responded said that we need consistency across the schools and the regions, we need more language programs, either FLESS or two-way immersion, a desire for increased local Level 4 series services, or AAP center locations, and then magnet programs to be utilized to solve any diversity or overcrowding issues. The feedback that was received in those general topics, on those general topics, was, as I said, not as strong, or as voluminous, if you will, as was received on the theme regarding the building of the new school in Pinewood Lakes, or renovating the Virginia Hills Center. The feedback that we received on the new school at Pinewood Lakes, as you can see in the presentation, that voters had said, you know, hey, we had voted for this, it was a part of the bond referendum that went out previously, it was a commitment that we felt that was made. Even though they understood when articulating that the fact guide delineates what our intended projects are, and the actual bond referendum question allows the board the flexibility to utilize the services to accommodate the capacity. But the point that was made was that they felt, most of the community members that we had spoken with, the predominance felt, we need you to build that school. There is an idea, and I think somebody used an example, I think it was Ms. D'Arinacovacs that said appropriately, folks generally gave the sense that, you know, hey, if you promised me this new car, or shiny new, brand-new home, versus an old one or a used one that you're going to have to do some work to, I want the new, I want the new stuff. And so, that was really the sense of what we got. The feedback in a few of the meetings was, it's closer to those who were going to be served by the new school. Some of the family members that were prevalent articulated quite well, that it would allow them to have more of a community school because of their travel time to Hybla Valley, et The challenges, again, they said, we understand that it might be higher free and reduced, additional resources may be required for that, you know, there may be some diversity challenges, but that also could be some strength. So, you know, the feeling was, when they mentioned a pro, they mentioned a con related to it, but the impetus was, we want the new school. Now, some of the folks that liked the idea about renovating Virginia Hills, they said, well, it's a, it's near overcrowded schools, it would feed into Edison, or potentially into another high school, depending on future boundaries, it might alleviate some of the future issues and concerns of overcrowding in that region. Some people believe that it might be less expensive than building a new school. And then, they also said, well, it's already in a congested neighborhood, that would create a challenge, it's too small, and would require moving other programs or other staff. So, the general gist and the census that we gained from, from folks that we're talking about, that was, you know, keep this in your arsenal. It's a great idea to go ahead and repurpose existing facilities, we like that, we like what you've done already, in terms of the outfit of the Bailey's Upper School, we like the idea of you utilizing the resources that you have in your arsenal for capacity issues, but, so don't lose sight of that. Now, we articulated quite clearly that in the case of Virginia Hills, you know, if we were to, the same people who had said, we want you to go ahead and build this new school in the Pinewood Lakes area, you know, we said, there really isn't money in the CIP, nor are there funding available for both to be done. So, that made people realize, well, okay, just keep it in your arsenal as an option for you in the future. So, in addition to that, some folks said, okay, well, what about the ISA? We want you to go ahead and reutilize the ISA if possible. And we've been talking with the general county in that, in fact, they reached out and contacted us to see if we'd be interested, we had said that. I've been trying to have further conversations with them about what exactly that's going to look like, if that were to be a possibility, when the folks finish building their facility out in the Sully area. And, but the general census was, if you can reutilize or repurpose the ISA, sort of in keeping with the idea about keeping these options in your quiver, if you will, we'd like you to do that. Now, we had taken a look at that, and Mr. Sneed was very, very, very extremely rough walking through the facility to totally renovate and outfit. If we were to do the entire facility, it was approximately above $30 million, and that was a really rough, rough estimate, but it was something to give an element of size, of scope, and so forth. And it would really take an analysis of it. The other thing is, it provides some swing space if we were to have it, some combined uses, whether it's preschool, whether it's alleviate overcrowding for earlier grades, or providing some health and human services. I know that Neighborhood and Community Services is talking about providing some service accommodation for the community there. But the general census of the community was, we like the idea of you keeping a facility like that, and repurposing it if possible. And to be really blunt, it does have some really nice features in terms of the bones to it. It's got a good overall structure in terms of some of the features and architectural elements, and for example, the media center, what was known as the library back in the day, and also in the auditorium, is absolutely, you just don't find that anymore, the texture, the feel. So, there are some real values and attributes to that, and plus, it's a over 30-acre site, Then, the next steps, basically, in conclusion, really, we just, as staff, wanted to go ahead and make sure that, not only to report back as to what we found, but also to say that we're going to continue with the expansion of Bucknell, the right-size, and as you recall, we had conversations with this body in this room on a couple occasions about size of facilities, and also the size of Bucknell, and the fact that we were going to go ahead and right-size that. And we are, and our intentions are to continue moving forward with the design and construction of the new school at Pinewood Lake. And the last thing I'll say is, there was some conversation about taking a look at program considerations, and our statement is that, in the event that that should occur, we would like that to begin sometime after, perhaps in the new year, maybe the end of this year in December, really in advance of any design of any special requirements, and also any type of scoping considerations that would need to be made in looking at this region. Now, I will say, it does, any subsequent adjustments because of the conditions that we have in existence with both Groveton and Hybla Valley, does require some, not tectonic shift, but some shift in the region, because if you look where the overcrowding is, you look where the schools to alleviate this, the Pinewood Lakes site, for example, to alleviate this, it would require, and where the capacity and seats are being provided, it is going to require a really, an in-depth conversation, not only from staff's recommendation about what that potential scoping sequence may be, and that was something that we did articulate quite well to the communities in these four meetings of those participants. We did specifically state that this was not a boundary, it was not a scoping discussion, but they recognized, and the feedback is, that they know that at some point, the feedback of the question that was asked, is really, we need an answer to this specific question, whether the new school, or to renovate Virginia Hills, with the understanding that at some point in the fall, we're going to have to be coming back in the next year, and going through a separate community process about scoping, as we normally do in our CIP process, and boundaries, and having that discussion, that feedback, coming back and briefing the body regarding those components. So, with that, I think, Dr. Garza.
I like the way you summarized that, Jeff, because the number one question we had to answer, was it going to be the new school, or were we going to reopen Virginia Hills? Because we had something, some new things happen that we did not anticipate when the previous bond was prepared and taken out to the public. And before we can really do a boundary scoping process, we have to know where seats are. So, we had to go back and say, let's answer this first question, before we can even go to the second piece of this work. And I think it's clear from what we've heard from the community, that it is their preference of the community, very strongly, to move forward with the new school, and not bring Virginia Hills back online. It doesn't mean down the road, that the board, we might not have different conditions in the future, where we might have to consider using Virginia Hills as a school again, and that's certainly still part of our arsenal down the road, but in terms of the immediate future, it appears that the community is much, is strongly in favor of proceeding with the new school. Correct?
We're going to start with Mr. Stork.
Well, first off, I wanted to thank all staff for the tremendous job they've done. We really had some major challenges in how to go about doing this. This is, I think this is, if not unprecedented, clearly unprecedented in the last 20 years, that we've done anything close to this, and that means that the extensive amount of outreach and efforts on everybody's part to really put this together and have this kind of community dialogue, something that I, I obviously felt very strongly that we needed to do. You never know, when you start this process, where it ends up, and that's frankly, the purpose of doing it, is to make sure you, you clearly are listening, and you're open to whatever that, wherever that process, wherever that dialogue takes you. So, and again, the amount of staff time it took to do this was tremendous, and I particularly want to thank the facility design and construction, and Debbie, and Mr. Plattenberg, and I know Susan Quinn, you were a part of, there's many, many people that are part of that, and I know some of the support staff that went with it, and I'm not including, but again, four meetings, very, in some cases, very intensive discussions as part of that. It was not easy, and I think we gleaned a lot, I think, not only in terms of whether or not this process is the right process for the future, I think we learned some things about how it could be fine-tuned, and we've had some, at least preliminary discussions about that, and I'm looking forward to having more as we kind of roll this, this particular process out to other regions. I know it's kind of your intent is to try to do a little bit more of this. But again, this is, this has been so big, and, and Dr. Garza, I think you captured it very well, that the key difference between where we were a couple years ago, and where we are today, is called Department of Defense finally coming through, frankly. Those of you who've heard me speak before, I challenged folks at Fort Belvoir and Department of Defense pretty hard, because they kept saying that it's up to Fairfax County taxpayers to pay for a new school on Fort Belvoir, and given our capital improvement dollars, that was not really a realistic option, and the fact, the fact that Fairfax County taxpayers would pay for a school on federal land is, seemed even more hard to understand. But, but that truly changed, really, the equation in many, many ways. I, as people in the community know, I've, I've been biased towards the, looking at the, the Virginia Hills, because of, that's really where the development is happening, significant development is happening. And once I understood the, once you could see that the Fort Belvoir site was, was, was going to be there, that, that changed some of the dynamics about the criticality of the Pinewood Lakes school. But the community has also identified some, you know, key passions and concerns that they have about what that, what they would like to see, in particular, new versus kind of recycled school, and that played a lot into the process, and I understand that. The fact that it's, the school itself, Pinewood Lakes, would be located in an area that, that has a tremendous population growth of students, and has a lot of needs, that are going to make the school a very challenging school from day one, to, to frankly, build a community there that, that isn't, you know, a 90% free and reduced meal population, which we all recognize, and education literature tells us, and I don't think there's a single person out there that doesn't recognize that that makes it harder for students to be successful. You're going to have to wrap around a lot more in that school to give those kids the same chances they might have had in a school that's less intensively poor. That deeply worries me, particularly because the resources have not been there, and we can look around, and I can give you lots of examples where, where we've not provided wraparound, we don't, we, we were challenged in trying to do that, because we've not been funded at a level that allows us to do that as a system. I have no doubt that, that Dr. Garza and, and the future Region Assistant Superintendent will make that a priority, and we'll have, we'll find a way to try to ensure that those resources are there, but I know it won't be easy, particularly if our funding levels continue as it is, and that troubles me more, that troubles me the most. I think the expansion of Bucknell is one that I have strongly supported in the beginning, I think it makes sense. Moving forward with the construction of new school at Pinewood Lakes, I think we clearly can make a great argument for that, I'm comfortable with taking that forward as, as the community outcome of these conversations. But to be honest, now, the very difficult work will begin, which is, you identified kind of a, where this new school would go, you identified what the new school would be, but there'll be so many other dominos, and I've, and I know Tammy and I have talked about this at every single meeting, the number of dominos that will fall as a result of one of these decisions will be extensive. There'll be, and that, that impact will be widespread, not only on, on, obviously, Virginia Hills, but also on existing schools that are getting ready to be renovated, including Hallam Meadows, Stratford Landing, Waynewood, in particular. There'll be consequences for the, the impact that will have on Mount Vernon High School, as well as West Potomac High School, Riverside, Willie Hills, Virginia, I'm sorry, Mount Vernon Woods, Woodlawn, those are all going to be dramatically impacted by these decisions. I don't, I don't think any of us know where all those, what all those impacts are going to be, because this is kind of step one, and the next 10 steps are going to be a function of, of where we see the most appropriate kind of boundaries to be drawn, and/or the ability to develop a magnet school, which I think we still feel very strongly would be something that, that would be appropriate for this area. I know Ms. D'Arinacovacs and I still have a passion about that, and we're going to continue our advocacy on, on that, on our behalf, and I think on behalf of the board, hopefully, to, to see the value of doing something like that. I, I will, my intent is, as a follow-on to this, is to hold a number of community meetings to discuss these recommendations, and we look forward to bringing back to the board those conversations that I have. I would love to see the school system itself to provide and to have at least a couple of community dialogue meetings. I haven't specifically had this conversation with Dr. Garza or staff about their ability to support that, but I, I'm going to repeat what I've said before, in the very beginning of this process, I think the, the, once a recommendation has been made, I think it behooves us all to go back to the community and, and hopefully have that conversation about what this means in terms of the other impacts. Nobody, I don't think anybody knows at this, at this point, but I, I know that it's coming, and we will, we have a number of decisions that this will drive. So, without going on too much longer, I just, I think it's, it's a significant next step, working with the community to identify how this, this next step will, should go forward, I think is important. I, we cannot, absolutely cannot ignore the impact that it's, that these will have on Mount Vernon High School, and West Potomac High School, because, particularly, West Potomac High School, which is in the process of being on the way to being overcrowded, more than 500 students, and being the second-largest high school in Fairfax County, to me, is unacceptable, and I think we need to obviously include that as part of our, our ultimate conversations. Whether or not I'm here to specifically vote on those issues is, probably remains to be seen in terms of whether or not some of those are addressed this year, or some of those are addressed in future years, but I think, again, my passion is that we have schools that are reasonably sized, and aren't overcrowded, and are clearly neighborhood and community schools that people can continue to send their kids to, and feel good about how they're going to be, how they're being educated, and helping them reach their full potential. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stork. Ms. Kovacs, I know you share schools in the area, so I'm leapfrogging to you.
Oh, well, you know what? You don't have to do that yet, I will speak to it later, but Ms. Evans and I were sidebar-ing over here. The handouts from Regions 3 Community Engagement Meeting, they are not opening, and they would answer some of her questions. Ms. Rhodes has gone upstairs to see if that can open, and, because it won't open on either the iPad.
I can tell you where you can find them. If you go to the facilities website, and then you click on Region 3, right, that, all the handouts are there, so I have opened them on my page, so if you go there, each of the handouts is listed separately, and they will open.
That can be a workaround.
Mrs. Smith is a tech whiz.
We need a couple of those.
All right. So, Ms. Kovacs, I'll put you closer to the other group, then that goes to Ms. Heinz. You're on deck? You're on deck?
Yeah, thank you. So, I just had a few questions, thank you. Looking at, I guess what I'm doing is, maybe I'm kind of becoming the new Sandy, because I want to always, every, anytime we talk about what we're doing in certain parts of the county, I always want to bring up, as you always brought up Bailey's, I feel like I want to bring up the schools in our neck of the woods, which, and I'm including McNair, and that whole, you know, the feeder schools for Herndon, Westfield, and, you know, South Lakes, we have tremendous growth in that area, so, and I, I'm not suggesting that there isn't a need down here, for sure, but, so my question would be, does any of this affect or move back what we need to have happen out there with McNair and Coats, and the schools in the western end?
Well, in terms of, first of all, you know, that's the, that's the dynamic nature of FCPS, the whole division. I mean, we've got needs in Coats-Mcnair, that is a high area where we know through looking at the data, that the growth is, is phenomenal. That's why we are in the process of looking for possible solutions out there, that we have to come back. As part of any, in terms of that, that part of it, any work that we do in that area is part of a normal, when we go out, identify potential use, just like Mason Crest, identify where we're going to actually put a school, get concurrence consideration, like we've done with other projects, get board's approval, and then go ahead and start construction, and then at that time, go out and do scoping and boundary adjustment as well. Well, that need is immediate. We need to address that immediately. We also have Longfellow, Cooper, Thoreau, Luther Jackson, and I'm leaving out one middle school, I think I said Cooper, but in any event, we've got an issue with all the middle schools that I just mentioned, that is, it's daunting, it's at the doorstep as well. So, the first thing I wanted to say is that we have those, those needs that are existing concurrently, and your specific question was, how is that affecting it? I, is it delaying or impacting it? I don't believe so currently, that's why we went out to the community right away to get this information about this specific question, was, we saw the potential impact of deferring action on these as impacting the 155 cap that we have each year. So, that's why we wanted that feedback, we looked at the timeline, we felt like we could get this feedback and get moving, as long as we can keep moving, and still maintain within tolerance what it is we need to do. And I forgot to thank Kathleen Thomas of OCCR, and her staff, also Debbie Tyler, the Region Assistant Superintendent extraordinaire, and all the other folks that were a part of those meetings, they did an outstanding job, and I apologize for not mentioning them earlier.
Let me go back to your question real quickly. The conversation started with Region 3, only because the time, the time, the timing of the projects, we needed the answers to some of this first, so it was more immediate. I don't believe the answers to any of these affect projects anywhere else, so that was part of your question. I don't think it affects timelines in any other area either. Now, it doesn't mean that they won't change at some point because of other decisions that are made throughout the system, and I think those would come from the board. This is a starting point, though, for regional-type discussions. Now, they may not need to be as comprehensive as this one was in four different places, but because of the, the far-reaching impact, but we do see, and the staff has developed a tentative timeline that we're prepared to bring back to the board really soon, because I think it's almost in final format, and it would show the next logical, the community engagement, and Coats-Mcnair, I think, is the next one on there, in fact. And so, you'll see, I think that would give you some sense kind of of peace, knowing that that's on the radar, and the timeline is moving forward, they are already working on solutions. So, you'll see over, over the next, really, calendar year, if not longer, how all these other regional conversations would happen, and kind of the timing of those as we contemplate it.
Thank you. That is reassuring, and whenever I talk to you guys, I get reassured that you're aware of what's going on, and that you're looking for solutions, but I also know that it's a tight budget, you know, that we don't have enough money to do all the things, and so I just want to make sure that the board, as we're making these decisions, is aware of, you know, my, our guys over in our end of the county. So, just another question, on Slide 5, I'm glad to see that you're taking a look at local Level 4 everywhere, because I think, and it's my understanding that particularly in that region of the county, we are missing some of that advanced curriculum, and, I don't know, just my feeling, as I've looked at how we do, and it came out of the, the math study as well, that really, we need that local Level 4 available everywhere, if we're going to meet needs, and it's part of our, our gap, and part of our equity issue, I think, so I approve that.
Yeah, Ms. Heinz, that's an excellent point that you made, and Dr. Garza's comment about, when we look at the community outreach and engagement, each, like the guiding principles, this is why it all ties in. The guiding principles talk about where appropriate, where possible, and each community having reflections that may be different or nuanced than another community. The conversation that you're talking about, and the next engagement, has a lot of ISD elements. So, that community outreach is going to be, although the same framework perhaps, it's a different format and different questions. So, that's an excellent point that you raised, and I wish I had thought about mentioning that.
Great. Ms. Heinz, you're finished? Okay. Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Evans and Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith, for helping us to find where to find these. So, the maps are big enough, I can see it. I just have a quick question. ISA, who owns it right now? Do we still own that? That is a beautiful building, and it's future. That is a beautiful building and it's future in time.
Yeah.
Do we still own it?
Fairfax County owns it.
So the county owns it? And so do we, I mean, the, is, the academy, the Saudi Academy? Because I know we gave, so where is, what's its future?
That's a very good question. I've been trying to get some kind of feedback. I was contacted by Mr. Stalzer a couple of years ago and he asked me, he said, you know, there is a contract that is terminating and that is coming to term, and he said, would we be interested? And I said, absolutely. And people have asked, well, what would you use with that? I said, I have no idea.
But it's a beautiful building.
But I need, wherever I get an opportunity to say yes and someone's asking, I'll take it, especially when it's 30 acres of property. It provides possibilities and I'm all about that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would recommend that we not let that one go permanently, because it's a beautiful school and property and all the rest of that. Okay. And where is it, where is that building located in relation to Virginia Hills and this new property site? Sort of. What's it close to?
The ISA is, and I hope Dan and I get this right, because you're neck of the woods, but it's actually on the southern end of Route One, kind of in B., is that correct?
ISA is across, from the South County Government Center Building and Pine Wood Lakes is probably up the highway maybe a mile.
Okay.
I mean, they're not far apart, but ones on, Pine Wood Lakes is on the west side of the highway, the ISA building is on the east side of the highway, and they're both fairly near, I mean, ISA is right on Richmond Highway, whereas Pine Wood Lakes is slightly off of Richmond Highway.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll go with Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. Velkoff, followed by Ms. Kofax.
Yes, thanks very much. I, and thank you, Kathy, for telling us where to go for these handouts, that's certainly helpful.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, oh, I just said, I just said thank you for telling us where, where to find this. As far as the, the different solutions, I, I think I heard Mr. Plattenberg mention 20 to 30 million dollars, was that, did I hear that right? What was, what was the, let me start over again. To build a new school, what's the cost of that?
It's about 25 million.
25 million? Okay.
Yeah, the, the number that Mr. Plattenberg referred to was if we were to have the ISA back in our inventory, just, just a rough number to renovate the facility. It's about 145,000 square feet or so.
So, so the total for, I'm talking about the, the comparison between Pine Wood and Virginia Hills. So what would it be to renovate versus how much would it be to build new?
You would, it would be a couple of million less at Virginia Hills. We, based on the zoning of the site, we could, we would be capped at around 87,000 square feet and six, 650 students. The new school, obviously, would be a full-size school, so it would be about 20,000, 15,000, 20,000 square feet bigger.
Okay. And we have the property at Pine Wood?
Yes, we own the property.
We own that property?
It's been in our inventory for more than 50 years.
Oh, I see, okay. And with the community engagement, with the preference being for the new school, was that predominantly because of the location of the new school or was that predominantly because it's a new school versus a renovation?
If you would go back, this was, the new school that's being referenced was reflected in our 2013 bond.
Okay.
There was a new school, and so that was the reason we felt compelled, that if we contemplated going a different direction than the new school, that we needed to go out and talk with the community about it. So that's why there was a conversation about new school or Virginia Hills, because something new happened that we didn't expect, and that was the new school at Fort Belvoir.
Okay.
So that's why new school was on the table. And I don't know that we made that clear or not.
But as far as the preference of the community, that was because they were promised a new school or because they liked the location or because they?
Largely, the sentiment was, you said we would get a new school in the 2013 bond, you need to, you need to live up to your obligations, honor your commitment to doing that. Did I reflect that correctly?
But another factor was the new school would be located within the Mount Vernon Pyramid and one of the high schools that we have, the largest growth, maybe the largest, projected over the next five years is West Potomac. So I think the sentiments of the community were, if we built this new school, it would be in the Mount Vernon Pyramid and we would wind up actually shifting some of the students from West Potomac to Mount Vernon. At least that's what I gather from the community.
And there was, and there was also some emotive comments from some of the, some
of the, the parents of children, that they spend so much time traveling, they don't feel they have a school, a sense of school where their children can play on the playground. So the location as well. I mean, there were a number of things that they brought up and those were among the compelling reasons that were provided, just some of them.
And in terms of where the critical mass is for the overcrowding, is it, is it equidistant from the two sites or is it more with the Pine Wood?
That was kind of hard to answer, because there's pockets of, we have challenges in various pockets. I will tell you that with the building of the new school, this will be a complex boundary scoping process, because it will be shifting, it'll, it won't be just, it's hard to answer your question, because it wouldn't be, well, half the students from this school now will go over to this school. It's, it's going to require, you know, contemplation of a number of changes, sequential changes throughout that area, and that's why we felt like it was important to have such a comprehensive, you know, four different sites engagement, because it's, this will be one of the more complex opening of a new school because of those boundary factors. Did I answer that correctly, Dan? You might want to add to?
I would, I would think it would be, it would be the most complex elementary school boundary change that we've had since I've been on the board, so that's 11 years. I, I just don't know of any that would be, that's even commensurate with this.
Even Mason Crest? Because the, and Mason Crest was bringing it in?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
All right.
Because you're, you're dealing with, there's too many other domino effects with.
I believe you on that, you don't have to go through it, I can understand how.
And then you're looking at, at levels of poverty in different pockets of community that, that historically there's a, an island, attendance island that's, that's bused to another school and then that school now potentially would lose that attendance island, which means the other schools in that community would, would, there'd be capacity nearby, and that's totally separate from where the school's located, basically five, four, five miles away from where the school's located. So it's just a lot of levels to it, that's, that's all.
We've also had, like, you know, Ms. Strauss had Colvin Run, which was highly sporting, as I refer to it, so each one of you have had opportunities in your individual areas that you represent.
Another, another part that was, that's unique about this particular conversation and just the timing of it all is, and Dan, you've mentioned this a number of times, and board members that aren't living this day-to-day may have forgotten, but it was kind of a historic number of schools that are up for renovation in, in the same region. So it was also an opportunity to kind of, well, what do we need to be doing with all these schools all along, you know, because there's a number of them. I think, how many are under, either about to have renovations already started?
Six renovations.
Six?
And a follow-on, Seventh, and about just a couple of years after that, so.
So it was a unique?
Probably a third of the elementary schools.
And Bailey's, and I mean, I mean, and, sorry, Fort Belvoir. It's a lot that was going on.
So, so this, this is fully funded in the CIP, because it's in the bond, and then the addition on Bucknell is also funded in the CIP? All right, that's all the questions I have for now, thank you.
I think it's also, very quickly, I think it's important to talk about Bucknell for just a minute. Bucknell has about 250 students, it's a very small school, and by design to some extent. So this, this is an opportunity for us to add capacity to Bucknell, to bring them up to about 600, and then we'll be able to draw from some other schools that are overcrowded into the Bucknell and get them to a decent-sized school where they have a little bit more support structure in terms of the, you know, economics of that. I don't have to explain that to the board, it's, it's a good thing.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Mr. Velkoff and then Ms. Kofax.
Thank you. And earlier, one of these versions of the, well, the values, right, talked about a program, unique programs in every pyramid, and I would actually like to advocate for a unique innovative program in every single school in the county going forward. I think we have to give parents a reason to say, I want my child to be in that school, okay? And I also think we need to give to our teachers a reason to say, wow, I want to be in that school, wherever it is. I think that we, as a school board and the Board of Supervisors combined, are failing to update our notion of economic development. I think the county does its thing, we do our thing, and I think we're missing an opportunity to view our schools as economic assets, as part of the county's economic development plan. And let me give you a little example. We were actually informally discussing this at lunch. You know, the county is hoping to land the FBI in, in a location near the Springfield metro, and it's probably way too late for this, and I realize I'm getting on a tangent, but I, I think the point's important. Imagine if we had some kind of magnet school already set up at Virginia Hills, all right? I mean, it's just, I forget the name of the road that goes by Rose Hill and you get up to Franconi and then you're just a hop, skip, and a jump from the location where that site would be. If you look at the area surrounding Virginia Hills, it's not unlike areas that I've seen in the Mason District, or for that matter Vienna, where you have a lot of homes that are from the 50s and 60s. But in that area of the county, they're sort of all from the 50s and 60s, where in these other areas, you, you see people moving in and putting these gigantic homes, replacing them. That hasn't happened in this area yet, and I would, I would gather, I would suggest the reason it's not happening is we haven't given people a reason from the school end for why they would want to come there. I mean, imagine if this, if this comes in with the FBI, you're, you're going to have thousands of people either, you know, moving into the county and wanting to bring their kids to the school. So I'm just bringing this up as, as something I think, I think that we and the supervisors really need to get together about and have a different view of economic development that's far, far more integrated. As for the, I have two more things. The first one, really quickly, and if we don't have the answer now, that's fine, but I'd be curious about the cost of ownership of the old Mount Vernon High School, AKA ISA, because I do think it's a good idea to bring it into the inventory, but it costs some amount of money just to take it on, and I think we need to know what that is. Finally, I'm going to throw out my crazy idea, and, you know, sometimes crazy ideas don't look so crazy after all. And some examples are the 40-hour work week or women's right to vote. So my crazy idea. My crazy idea is, you know, there's the Workhouse Arts Center out there on 123, and, you know, I really don't know what I'm talking about, but I would imagine that would be a really cool location to have, you know, an arts academy or an academy academy in anything. And I realize nobody's talking about this, but I just want to throw that one out there and let you all ponder that one.
And on that note, thank you for your creative genius, Ms. Kofax. And is anyone else wishing to speak? Because I don't have anybody else on the list. Okay, last word, Ms. Kofax.
I have so much to say. I, I'll start by thanking the staff for your attention and energy to getting this community engagement aligned and in a proper way. I realize we had a bit of a rough start after the first CIP came out, but I thank you for harnessing everybody's collective energies and moving forward in a very, very positive way. I share this area with Mr. Stork, as he said, it's mostly his. I thank you, Mr. Stork, for educating me on the history of this and, and getting it together and making sure we're working together to get it right. I think the community, there, you've had a lot of, a lot of dedicated people who've taken a lot of time, because it's very complex. May I tell you all right now, start studying it, because we, as a board, are going to have to do it, and I need you all to engage early. Mr. Stork may not be here, we can call him for historical knowledge, but he won't be here, we know that. He won't be here, because he's not running again. So it's very, very important that you all engage and understand the complexity of it and, and start reviewing. Programming, very, very important, Mr. Stork and I, that's why we asked that that be included as part of it. We didn't, we felt it was too siloed to just look at it. We talked about programming, we talked about the need to, to look, we, we gave handouts, you can see it in the handout, which the link is working now. We, we talked about what we have, what we'd like to have, and what other programming is available across the region. We talked about magnet schools, we talked about another type of TJ for, for, you know, for, for, like the Maggie Lena Walker School, which is for policy development, or we talked about an arts, an arts high school. We threw ISA in the mix. We have a lot of things out there, nothing is gelled, and it is one big kind of, you know, you do one thing, this scenario happens. You do another, this scenario happens. I'll be quite frank with you, my idea of where I was hoping to go was a little bit different, what the community wanted. I preferred the Virginia Hills option, but I'm not opposed to where the community is saying it wants to go, but I also don't want it to take Virginia Hills off the table for future times, because you talk about economic development and, you know, I feel there's a misguided housing development down there in North Hills that's on the table. 500 housing units, which could be, you know, below market value, perhaps, I'm not certain exactly, but it's, it's, and it, it would feed into this area as well, it'd be behind Bryant High School. I don't think that's smart from the county perspective, that's on the table now, that's, that's out there. Mr. Velkoff, I love your crazy idea, except I, there, there exist schools such as that at the Workhouse Arts Center, and it's a private school, it's a private performing arts school, and I know that because my daughter takes dance lessons, not at the academy, it is an academy, but she takes dance lessons from, you can also take outside. So, and the interesting thing was, is the owner of that came to me early on and said, I'm proposing this, could we get this in the schools? And I'm like, not for a long time. And she goes, okay. And she found a way and she opened it up, but it is at the Workhouse Performance, so. So it's not crazy and it exists, but it, it's complex and I don't think I can add much to the specificity that Mr. Stork didn't already say, but I encourage you just to please start looking at it and understand that, you know, when we go out in the fall with some, or, or the fall or the late winter, or early winter, I should say, either before the holidays or after the holidays, I'm not exactly sure when we're, when that will happen, it's going to be complex.
Okay, Ms. Strauss?
Just a very quick question. When is the FBI situation going to be settled? This summer? Okay, thank you.
All right, then it looks like Mr. Plattenberg, Ms. Tyler, Ms. Quinn, thank you very much, Mr. Sneed, appreciate you guys presenting this afternoon and being patient with us. And at this point, this portion of the work session on facilities is completed.
But, Ms. Smith, why don't you?
Ms. Smith, did you want to add something? No?
No, I, I, I just wanted to, I guess my, my concern was to kind of get a sense of the board as to if, you know, at, at this point, I just wanted to kind of get an understanding, or are you guys fine where we are proceeding, moving on? Yeah. Well, I think it's important that we kind of understand what the next step is and where we are. The, where we are right now is we, we have, we have committed to, as, as a, as a board, committed to the, where we will be and where the boundary and scoping will be is with this new school at the Pine Wood Lakes area. Mr. Stork?
But I think the scoping and the boundary will go up based upon that.
Unless, right, unless there's some kind of change, and we, but I don't think the board itself has made a decision on, on what the CIP changes might be as a result of this, because there clearly will be some, so...
Right. I just wanted the board to be certain about where we were going next.
So now, I've got some hands up. I see Ms. Smith, I see Ms. Schultz, and Mr. Stork, it sounds like you're going to be adding something in here.
No, I just, I guess, and, and we didn't, I guess, obviously didn't talk about this early, but I, staff has made the recommendation, which historically means the board needs to ultimately make some decisions, either confirm, deny, or do nothing, and then staff's recommendations, in essence, on this issue at least, would continue. But I, for my purposes, I, I, I am planning on having some community conversations before I would agree to accept staff's recommendation as that of what the board, how the board wants to proceed. That's my personal view on it, but so that's what I'm putting out there.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Okay, I've just kind of been listening. So now you raise questions. Number one, I'm not sure, I know, I look at this work session, it was for discussion, I'm not sure I know what staff's recommendation is. I'm not sure I understand what kind of timeframe we need and where decision points are from the board. So I think if we had some clarity, I mean, we can talk about things forever, but then we're not at a point where we need to get something done. So if we could understand that, that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. So if I wasn't clear, on page nine, our next steps are that we are going to continue with the expansion of Bucknell, we are, staff is going to go ahead and move forward with the design and construction of the new school at Pinewood Lakes, and that, when I stated that any potential conversation regarding programming, and potential scoping, and our subsequent boundary discussions as a result of staff moving forward, we will be coming back in the fall, around December, if not the beginning of the spring, for that conversation. And that's the direction that staff is going in, unless there's, otherwise, this body provides us with other clarity.
Yeah.
So it would be the same process that the board has done, where we vote on the scope of a boundary study and all that. And so the timeframe of that, if you're just starting design and construction, I mean, we're talking a couple of years before the school opens, and, and so what kind of is the timeline of when these things have to be done?
That's, that's a very good point, because what we're really talking about in this situation, when we started saying that when we identify scoping and potential program, it's really so that we have some of that articulated for the design components. So you're, you're correct, there is a timeline associated with this that, that is delineated when we talk about the year and a half normal process of a boundary process, and so on, that we've gone through, that you all have experienced, that we've gone through, usually in the fall, identifying the, the, the general scope, then we go out to the community and say, you know what, this looks really smart from staff's perspective, this looks logical, this works. And the community comes back and says, well, you're right on this, but you guys are way off on this, 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 and this, and you need to be considering this component, because these students are, are closely aligned with these, and this interstate is a natural barrier that you don't want to cross. So I'm being a little extreme, but they give us the feedback. We then come back, and they also, as you're their representative, they also give you the feedback on what it is that they're looking at. So we would identify as a part of that what looks logical to staff, go out to the part of the community engagement, get the feedback to go ahead and identify that feedback and report back to the school board as to what that, what that looks like. We've done it with every other boundary process we have, and it's delineated by school board policy.
At a previous work session, and I can't remember the month, a month or two ago, we did have a timeline with regard to communication on this, where we talked about the, the scoping process, will begin in, in the, in the fall of this next school year. It would not be completed probably till January at some point, and then in the spring, we would complete the process. It's, you know, it's a two-step process, and that would then have it completed and approved by the end of next school year, which is in keeping with our time, which is in keeping with the way we've customarily approved boundaries. They're typically completed a full year before the school, or schools affected, open.
And the little nuance with this one, Dr. Garza's spot on, the, the little nuance with this one is Bucknell, and that's why we're saying this coming fall, the beginning of the spring. And that's why it may seem a little confusing as to the timing, but it is associated with the design components that we're looking at.
Ms. Schultz?
So Ms. Smith kind of started going there where I was, which is, you know, this is what I understood, is you're going to continue with the plan of Bucknell, you're going to move forward with the construction of a new school, but we're not being asked to do anything, right? Because if I'm being asked to give my, you know, imprimatur on anything right now, and Ms. Dernak, Kofax, you know, you sort of were asking or saying, we're, we're approving, or we're, we're agreeing to, or, I'm not agreeing to anything, because we're not being asked to agree with anything. So I, that's what I...
This is, this is something that we've debated, because technically, you've all approved this new school in the previous bond package.
And the CIP.
In 2013, and in the CIP. So technically, it's already been approved by the board, but if you would feel more comfortable with us bringing it back to you, we'd have to do it very soon, because it does have an effect on the 2015 bond. Is that correct, Kevin and Jeff?
And, yes, it does. And normally, staff, really, what we, we, our, our intent is, really to report back in the direction that we're headed. And if there's something that's really foreign, or really against the plan, then that conversation about the desire to come back, and, you know, this and that, the other, and prolong and extend, but the CIP did have that approval. This body, as a collective body, approved the direction the staff was heading in. Because we had all these things going on, you know, let's say the stars align with, Fort Belvoir, Woodlawn, all the number of renovations, community feedback, we went out and checked the polls, and the polls that we got, we reported back to you. This is what we heard, what I just imparted, we added some color, some side stuff that was a part of that, we're going ahead forward, because...
Okay, so my, so my question, my only question would be then, is there any eventuality that the previous work session where we talked about the queue and hiring a consultant, and coming in and reviewing that, there's nothing that would come in a report like that that would upend this in any way?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Okay. I mean, you know, what, I mean, you know...
These are already funded projects, they're already, you know, in the pipeline, they're not like the projects you all were talking about. I don't know how to describe that better, Jeff.
You did describe it quite well.
Right, because, but we did ask them to look at, you know, we, we kind of expanded, you know, look more comprehensively, and it's not like they're going to, they're going to find more room down there in schools or something. The, the last point that I'd like to make, which goes back to something you said earlier in a previous work session today, Dr. Garza, which is around the, what's the floor of classroom sizes? Because some schools are full, but they're full of classrooms that are really small. And so the notion that a full school is full of seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-sized classes, instead of a school somewhere else in the county where the smallest class, you know, to start with at an elementary size is twenty-five, makes a different notion of what's a full school. And I, that is a conversation that this board has yet to have, and we have to have, because as space becomes a premium, and certainly CIP dollars are a premium, that's, you know, that's part of the problem.
All right. Ms. Kofax, final word?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I'm, I'm sorry if I caused some confusion, I just, my intent was to ensure that everybody understood how staff was proceeding. Okay? So that's what, because, because it's complex, and because the train is going, the train is slowly moving, you, we all need to understand, this is where the train is going.
Ms. Evans?
Well, I guess that gives me some concern. I mean, because this is a big decision for this board to be making, just by not saying anything else. You know, we, as, as Mrs. Schultz says, we don't know the size of the school, right? You know, we've, we've had, this, I believe, is the first time that the board has had this conversation, isn't it? I mean, about this, about the specifics, about the specifics of... So you're saying that we've had the, the conversation about exactly where this school was going to be put? And so the Virginia Hills idea was a new idea that was brought out as part of the community engagement?
No, we've, we've talked about several months ago that we were going to take out two options to the community.
Right.
And the reason we, and I described it to you all, just like I did today, that was, we felt like we had to ask the community, because it was different than what the bond was, that you all had approved already, and what, what was in the CIP. So we felt like we needed to go ask the community, and the community said, no, stick, stick with the plan you had.
Yeah.
That's what they said to us.
The new school in the, at the site, the current site has always been in the CIP, and funded, the new...
So the reason to go out was because of, there was a new plan.
Fort Belvoir, and some of the changes since.
A new possibility.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Okay, with that, okay. This work session is adjourned.